Okay, we're back in session. Is there any other amendment to be offered? If not, we will be, I suppose, voting on the mayor's budget.
Yes, we have another amendment to offer. It was just distributed to everyone. In the haste there, I was just instructed by attorney to, we would want to read the individual ones into the record. Should I just start reading, Chairman?
Can I just ask, just for clarification? I see that this, the material that you gave us seems to have some gray items. Are those items that are, that you have deleted?
Those are the items that were revised from the version that you saw earlier today. Everything else is the same.
So your mill rate, I just want to ask, your mill rate stays the same? Or did you recalculate that?
The mill rates, we're adjusting the mayor's budget by a negative 0.95.
9.5? But it says 9.6 on it.
Yes, that's going to be a manual correction to the box at the top.
Point of order, Madam Chairman, what's a manual correction?
It's going to be read into the record, Vinnie.
What I would suggest that you do for clarity here is since you have a copy and the clerk has a copy, you can identify the document, since I understand all members of the council and the clerk now have a copy of the specific items that you are proposing as amendments to the budget. I would just suggest, to make it easy, that perhaps you read in the total amount of reductions in expenditures, the net number, and then go through the sheet and just read any changes. For instance, if everything under Other Funds Expenditures on the first page are the same, totaling $599,537, you could just indicate that. If there are any changes, any highlighted items, or you indicated you had deleted, I believe, some of these proposed cuts, just indicate that so everyone can cross them off and the clerk can cross them off as well. As long as we have a clean record as to what we're talking about here and what you're talking about, what your amendment is, that's fine, instead of necessarily reading each and every item.
Mr. Leclerc, may I just ask, so this amendment has never been introduced before?
I don't believe it has, no. We only had one amendment. You've only had two amendments.
So, in the first amendment that was introduced, you did have us read, you did have Mr. Chase read off every organization code and object code, say which department, and then the description. So you're saying that's unnecessary here?
For the first one, yes, because we didn't have it in writing, but tonight, Mr. Chase just gave us the handout, I believe, with those numbers on it.
No, he read them.
Read them all again?
I read each one.
You read each one of them in? Whatever your, it's your pleasure, whatever you want, Madam Chairman, whatever you think is easiest for your council.
Okay, and I just want to make sure, Mr. Can, that we have the most recent version, because I'm seeing no difference in the totals between what you sent this morning and what you sent currently.
There's three totals. The only total that changed is the general fund expenditures.
Not in the copy I have.
You're looking at the box at the top?
It says 4696249?
I'm going to read.
And the previous one said 4696249?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I think, let's make it easy. With the confusion I'm sensing here, let's just have the proposed amendments read in line by line.
Okay.
Let's just keep it simple, otherwise we're going to spend the whole time discussing how we're going to do it.
But, I'm sorry, Mr. Leclerc?
I would just ask Mr. K.
Yes, Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
The amendment that's written here, I'm just double-checking that this, that these sums are exactly what the numbers that we have here sum to, because my, the reason I'm asking that is because in this previous version that I got this morning, it's the same sum, and it seems like there had been some adjustments.
Beth, I'll say it for the, at least the second, possibly third time.
No.
I called in a manual edit. I'm going to read the corrected number into the record. The corrected number is not in the box, as you have just noted. The corrected number is $4,650,681. Those are the decrease in the general fund appropriations.
Ms. Cabral would like you to repeat that.
Well, I'm going to, should, I'm going to follow Mr. Attorney Leclerc's suggestion and go through these individually.
But before you do that, you have amendment on top here.
Very good.
And I just want to make sure that if we're doing manual corrections, that we are putting in the right numbers manually on our list.
So I'll read it. Amendment to the ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford for the year 7/1/2017 through 6/30/2018.
That's manual correction?
Correct. To decrease the general fund appropriations by $4,650,681, and to decrease the general fund revenues by $458,085. In addition, appropriations from other funds will be decreased by $599,537. This change is recommended by the majority of the town council and in addition to subsequent events after the mayor's proposed budget.
I'd like to sign on as a sponsor.
Madam Chairman, this change, I think he needs another manual correction. I love the term, that's new.
What a term.
Yeah, what a term. This change is recommended by majority. Well, it hasn't passed, so how can you say there's a majority here? I really think you need to ask who your sponsors are.
Very good.
And put that on here.
I'd also like to sign on as a sponsor.
I just declared, and if you need help reading lines, I'm happy to help.
I'm a sponsor.
I'm sorry, can you, the sponsors, Mr. Can, are whom?
The sponsors is Scott Farrington Posner, Mr. Wally Kadim, myself, Gregory Can.
And the fact that the FIA and police and EMS.
That's true. We can leave Wally off.
Okay, not Mr. Kadim. Okay, who else is a sponsor?
Mitzi Antezo.
And the blight.
Tina Manis. Four sponsors.
Okay.
Now, before you have a second, Madam Chairman, I'd suggest that the movement of this amendment now walk through the items under Other Funds, General Fund.
Yes.
And read each item before we have a second, because of course now the numbers don't add up to the numbers on the sheet.
Yep, okay.
The mill rate as the result of this change will decrease by .95 mil.
From the mayor's proposal?
Correct. I'll start reading the line items. There's many of them. From Other Funds Expenditures, Railroad, 401A Pension. Read the amounts also?
Yes.
$13,048.
That's an increase.
That's an increase.
So you have to say if it's an increase or decrease.
Thank you. Railroad, Police Patrol, Parking Authority, $12,500, increase. EMS Pension, 401K, $32,000, increase. EMS Social Security, $46,000, increase. EMS Medicare Taxes, $48,000, increase. EMS Health Insurance, $180,000, increase. EMS Life Disability Insurance, $5,000, increase. EMS 401K, $53,000, increase. WPCA Applied Overhead, $278,085, decrease. WPCA Capital Equipment, CEP, $446,000, decrease. WPCA Contractual Services, $265,000, decrease. General Fund Expenditures. WPCA Sewer Revolving Fund.
I'm sorry, can you read the organization code, the object code, and then the department, please?
Organization Code 01100, Object Code 0000. General Fund, WPCA Sewer Revolving Fund, $202,000, increase. Next line, 011016004, Town Council Clerk, Payroll Part-Time, $40,000, decrease. 0011016460, Town Council Clerk, Council Committee, $25,000, decrease. 01101, Account 66, Object 6681, Town Council Clerk, Council Contingency, $6,000, decrease. 011026003, Office of Mayor, Payroll Regular, $20,000, decrease. 010, excuse me, 01102, Account, Object 6061, Office of Mayor, Education Travel, $4,000, Account 011036061, Human Resources, Education, $3,000, decrease. 011036366, Human Resources, Employee Recruitment, $40,000, decrease. 011036459, Human Resources, Legal Expense, Collective Bargaining, $60,000, decrease. 011046003, Town Attorney, Payroll Regular, $72,936, decrease. 011046521, Town Attorney, Liability, $100,000, decrease. 011048381, Town Attorney, Legal Fees, $100,000, decrease. 011056061, Chief Admin Office, Education, $5,400, decrease.
6102, I mean 60.
I'm sorry, Mr. Can has the floor?
I lost my place, sorry.
011056102, Chief Admin Office, Printing and Stationery, $4,000, decrease. 011056503, Chief Admin Office, Printing Reports, $2,000, decrease. 011066003, Registrar Voters, Payroll Regular, $20,000, decrease. 011066526, Registrar Voters, Primary Specials, $16,000, decrease. 011086321, Town Buildings, Telephone, $20,000, decrease. 011086322, Town Buildings, Postage, $5,000, decrease. 011086362, Town Buildings, Electricity, $10,000, decrease. 011086363, Town Buildings, Heating Oil, $8,000, excuse me, $3,000, decrease. 011086364, Town Buildings, Water, $3,000, decrease. 011086371, Town Buildings, Gas Heating, Birdseye, $5,000, decrease. 011086372, Town Buildings, Electricity, Birdseye, $5,000, decrease. 011086399, Town Buildings, Outside Services, $5,000, decrease. 011096416, Agencies, Stratford Redevelopment, $25,000, decrease. 011096427, Agencies, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, $16,500, decrease. 011096450, Agencies, Raymark, $5,000, decrease. 011096440, Agencies, Art Commission. Another typo. It says $5,000 on your sheets. That should be a nugget of $5,000. It is a decrease. Apologies.
What? I'm sorry, where are you?
I believe that's an increase. It's an increase.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
How rare.
The Arts Commission hasn't done.
I'll reread the item. 011096440, Agencies, Art Commission, $5,000, decrease. 011096451, Agencies, SAEP, $5,000, decrease. 011116003, Planning and Zoning, Payroll Regular, $10,000, decrease. 0011116061, Planning and Zoning, Education, $20,000, decrease. 011516382, Contingency, Audit Fees, $10,000, decrease. 011516449, Contingency, Employee Testing, $2,000, decrease. 011516499, Contingency, Contractual Services, $10,000, decrease. 011516602, Contingencies, Anticipated Expense, $150,000, decrease. 011516603, Contingency, Contract Settlements, $190,000, decrease. 011516049, Contingency, Reserve Workman Comp, $75,000, decrease. 011516621, Contingency, Workman Comp All, $75,000, decrease. 011516621, Contingency, Workers' Comp, Public Works, $60,000, excuse me, $50, $50,000, decrease. 011516621, Contingency, Workman's Comp PD, $50,000, decrease. 011516621, Contingency, Workman's Comp, Fire Department, $50,000, decrease. 011516321, Contingency, Workman's Comp Settlement, $75,000, decrease. 0115166624, Contingency, Physical Exams, $10,000, decrease. Two more pages to go. 012016742, Debt Retirement, Capital Equipment Purchase, $242,614, decrease. 011516471, Debt Retirement, Capital Improvement, $45,000, decrease. 021, apologies, 012516051, Employee Benefits, Pension 401K for EMS, $32,000, decrease. 012516052, Employee Benefits, Social Security, EMS, $46,000, decrease. 021516052, Employee Benefits, Medicare Taxes, EMS, $48,000, decrease. 012516053, Employee Benefits, Health Insurance, EMS, $180,000, decrease. 012516053, Employee Benefits, Health Insurance, $225,000, decrease. 012516054, Employee Benefits, Life Disability Insurance, EMS, $5,000, decrease. 012516054, Employee Benefits, Life Disability Insurance, $5,000, decrease. 012516055, Employee Benefits, 401K for EMS, $53,000, decrease. 012516055, Employee Benefits, 401K for Railroad, $13,048, decrease. 013026499, Finance Treasurer, Contractual Services, that's a zero. 01303.
If I could pause you there, by zero, you mean zero on that line item in the budget as proposed?
No change to the proposed budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We should just don't even read that line then.
You don't need to read those.
I'll try to remember. 013036502, Purchasing, Advertising, $3,000, decrease. 03013046604, Tax Assessor, Part-Time, minus $8,000, decrease.
Mr. Can, 6004.
Should I read that line again?
Yes, please.
013046004, Tax Assessor, Part-Time, $8,000, decrease. 013046020, Tax Assessor, Overtime, $10,000, decrease. 013046157, Tax Assessor, Gas and Oil, $2,000, decrease. 13046382, Tax Assessor Audit Fees, $20,000, decrease. 013056003, Tax Collector, Salaries Regular, $24,000, decrease. 013056102, Tax Collector, Printing and Stationery, $3,000, decrease. 013056502, Tax Collector, Advertising, $3,000, decrease. 013536019, Recreation, Payroll Other, $10,000, decrease. 013586004, Economic Development, Payroll Part-Time, $5,000, decrease. 013586432, Economic Development, Community Services, $5,000, decrease. 013606422, Visiting Nurses Associations, Community Grant, $53,500, decrease. 014016061, Public Works Administration, Education, $2,000, decrease. 014036004, Public Works, Building Maintenance, Payroll Part-Time, $6,000, decrease. 014036005, Public Works, Building Maintenance, Seasonal, $5,000, decrease. 014036020, Public Works, Building Maintenance, Payroll Overtime, $10,000, decrease. 014036399, Public Works, Building Maintenance, Outside Services, $22,000, decrease. 014046199, Public Work Engineering's Material Other, $2,000, decrease. 014056020, Public Works Highway, Payroll Overtime, $10,000, decrease. 014056157, Public Works Highway, Gas and Oil, $30,000, decrease. 014056199, Public Works Highway, Material Other, $5,000, decrease. 014056309, Public Works Highway, Auto Maintenance Lease, $40,000, Increase. 014056309, Public Works Highway, Auto Maintenance, 40.
We're on the next one.
Apologies, just read that one. $40,000 Increase. 014056399, Public Works Highway, Yard Waste Pickup, $600,000, $60, $60,000, Increase. 014066020, Public Works Garage, Payroll Overtime, $6,000, decrease. Sorry. 14066216, Public Works Garage, Supplies, $5,000, decrease. 140663, 63, Public Works Garage, Heating Oil, $6,000, decrease. 14076020, Public Works, Payroll Overtime, $5,000, decrease. 014076020, Public Works, Parks, Gas and Oil, $5,000, decrease. 014076020, Public Works, Tree Removal, $35,000, decrease. 014076499, Public Works, Contractual Services, $10,000, decrease. 014086401, Public Works Sanitation, Disposal Fees, $20,000, decrease. 014536020, Fire Prevention, Payroll Overtime, $9,000, decrease. 014746003, Police Patrol, Parking Authority, $12,487, decrease. 014756004, Communication Center, Part-Time, $7,000, decrease. 015516802, Board of Ed, $1,399,015, decrease. 015516802, Board of Ed, Teachers Retirement, $902,181, decrease. Changes to Revenues in the General Fund. 011005038, General Fund, WPCA Applied Overhead, negative $278,085, decrease. 14054604, General Fund, WPCA Contractual Services, $265,000, decrease. 01100, General Fund, Building Lease, $25,000, Increase. 01104642, General Fund, Cell Tower Rental, $40,000, Increase. 014614349, Revenues, Fire Department, $20,000, Increase. That is the last entry.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion?
With all due respect to my colleagues, this is irresponsible. Totally irresponsible in what you're doing to this town, to its employees. But before I get into that, I may not have to. Mr. Clerk, I have a very serious question here. You've allowed changes to this based on manual change. Is that what you referred to it? These are manual changes?
Mr. Can, could you answer that?
Who, who, there was a reason for changing these manually as we went along? We changed the majority to listing names. That was a change called what?
A manual change.
Those were manual changes?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, I have a question. I've gone through this, and I have found 14, I believe, very serious errors. All right? Let's just take the first one, expenditures. I'm flipping here back and forth trying to keep up. The first expenditure, 29929, object 6055, Railroad, 401A Pension. I can't find 6055. I believe it's 6051. I can do another one. I found, let's go into the expenditures. Human Resources, Employee Recruitment. It's listed as 6366. It's actually, I believe, should be 6386. It's listed as 6366. It's actually, I believe, should be 6386. I've got another one here. In fact, I've got one where it doesn't even exist. Town attorney legal fees, 8381. It should be 6381. This is, you know, you, I don't know how this is affecting the lot, the real line, or, excuse me, the real items, line items in this budget if they don't even match this amendment. And I've got, I've, I think I count, I've got fourteen of these.
We're talking typewriters.
And I don't think they should be corrected manually. This has got to be shown to the public.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So we're talking.
No, I've got a question to Mr. Leclerc.
I guess, I guess, I think I hear, understand your question. It's problematic if, in fact, there are mistakes made on the motion regarding line items for expenditures. Because then if, if this body were to vote in the affirmative on the amendment and then adopt a budget ordinance based upon an amendment that has incorrect line items, that would be very problematic for the town because your numbers make no sense to the financial officer as to what departments have actually been appropriated. I think that's why I've asked you to read them in. We need, you need to be very careful to make sure whoever's moving and whoever's voting on this, that you have the correct line items, the correct categories, that you're making cuts or additions to. Otherwise, you're going to have a problem with your budget. You're going to pass an ordinance that makes no sense, that's not enforceable. That's a problem, that's a huge problem for you, the town.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Chase still has the floor. That was a question from Mr. Leclerc that Mr. Leclerc answered.
Well, obviously, if, if the town attorney thinks that this is a problem, this needs to be redone and brought it back with a correction.
Madam Chair.
Fourteen corrections.
You're interrupting.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Farrington Posner?
Okay. I see a few typos. That's what I see on here, Mr. Chase. And those typos can easily be corrected. There might be like a number off on the object number, though the description, the description is correct. And it's very easy to look at it and see exactly where it's coming from. So if we need to take a five-minute recess to fix a couple of typos, I think everybody can afford that time here, and I'd like to do that. What?
Let's do it together. Why not?
I'm sorry, but, Mr., so you are, are you making a motion for a recess, for another recess to, so we can get the correct numbers?
And we can print clean copies of this?
That's another, or is there a motion to withdraw the motion to? Did, did you make a motion? For recess? Yes or no? Okay, no.
Well, withdraw, withdraw the recess.
Is there errors in this?
There's just, it's just the fact that if we can just correct it right now altogether, we're here. Instead of going on a recess, if a number needs to be correct.
Let's talk about it.
Because if there are fourteen numbers that are off, we can fix fourteen numbers. But the other part of it also is that sometime when you make a motion, you can say what any necessary corrections need to be. You can say that in a motion, can't you?
No, no.
Yes, but here we are.
You want, you want to make a motion? You're asking me, could you make a motion that who makes the necessary corrections?
Yes.
No.
No, we will make the corrections.
Well, if you're going to, what I would suggest to do procedurally is, since there is a, an amendment on the floor that's been moved and seconded, someone can move to amend that amendment by changing line item numbers or descriptions to correct any items that you believe are incorrect in that amendment. Then you would vote on that amendment to the amendment, and then you ultimately will have an amendment before you that should, to be properly voted on, have the correct line items, so the financial officer and all the department heads and the mayor knows exactly what the budget is that you're voting on, and the public as well.
So the line items just need to be corrected prior to voting on this, is what you're saying?
I don't know what needs to be corrected because we just got a copy of this as well, and the town attorney's office has not cross-referenced your proposed amendment to the budget, so I, I don't know what's wrong. Mr. Chase has indicated there are numerous errors in line items, descriptions. The town attorney's office has not audited this yet, and I doubt that the financial officer has finished doing that either.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Llewellyn, then Mr. Harden, then the mayor.
Yes, Madam Chair, I see Mr. Timniak standing here at the podium. I request that he be recognized.
Okay, Mr. Timniak?
I, just a simple observation. It appears Mr. Chase is right. The object codes are wrong.
How many? I counted fourteen.
How would I know how many? Like, Missy, like, like, did I, did I run through the object codes and compare it to the budget book? Like, this is...
She's eighty-six years old.
I understand.
Please don't do this.
That's my point. I, I don't know how many other mistakes are in here and how long it's going to take to vet this, but yes, it appears that the object codes are wrong. So where else do we want to go on this?
Let's fix them now.
Begin.
Okay, that was Mr. Llewellyn. You still have the floor. Is there anything else that you wanted?
Nothing further at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, then it was Mr. Harden.
How many times are we going to put the glue on this paper, the white out on this paper, the eraser on the paper? I'm going to tell you this. If I had to vote for something as shaky as this, I would not give you my vote. There are too many things that just don't add up. And when you put something prematurely together like this, you're going to have some errors in this that could cause a major, major financial problem. You can shake your head and know if you want to. Okay? We're going to take another break. We're going to come back. We're going to go through the same thing all night. When you put something together like this, it's important that you take your time, you draw everything out. We can't keep going back to the drawing board to end up in the same spot that we're in now. This is why we continue to fall within this town. I don't, I, I don't understand this. If the numbers don't add up, let's get it done the right way.
Okay, then, Mr. Mayor?
Madam Chair, I just want to recognize Chris Timniak, one to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this?
Yeah.
Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yeah. Okay. The amendment in front of us, let me show you.
Speak to your counselors, please.
One, two, three, four pages. Has four pages of, of cuts. Lot of numbers to go through. We really took a lot of time to go through to make sure we made the right cuts to this budget. Then I look at the other one that failed, and the cuts are about that big. This is what the problem is, is that we need to just look at our, our, our numbers here, not our, not our totals of what we're cutting, just the, the item number, the object number. Just change it according to make sure it's right in the budget book. The numbers here are correct. The description is correct. It's just to match the number in the book, which will take us no more than ten minutes to do.
I'm already on page three, and I've only found two mistakes.
Okay, so it'll take us no more than ten minutes. So when I hear from Mr. Harden pretty much say about, ah, how many times are we going to put glue on this, and, you know, we can't vote on this, it's very shaky, no. The actual cut numbers and the revenue numbers are not shaky. Those are solid. What's, what he's referring to as shaky is just taking the object numbers and matching it up to the number in the budget book, which will take us ten minutes, like I said. So, you know, at this point, we could either do it here, or we could take a ten-minute recess, fix it, reprint it a clean copy, and move forward with this.
I'd like to purport an amendment.
I'm sorry, you don't have the floor.
There's an amendment before us.
There, the, is there?
I'd like to amend the amendment. That's what I was told I have to do by the lawyer, right?
Okay, Ms. Manis?
Uh, the following line items changes on page two of four. 01103 6366 should read 01103 6386, human resource, employee recruitment. The label is correct. 011, in addition, 01104, it currently reads 8381. It should read 6381, town attorney, legal fees. Every, the label is correct, the number is wrong. Still going through it. Keep talking. It'll be done. Does it have a second?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second for that amendment, for those two changes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes ten to zero. It's getting long, getting slow. Uh, okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
There are still twelve more.
Twelve more, okay, thank you.
Nice to share it with us.
I think this should be redone.
Uh, each can share what we can fix.
Okay, wait, one at a time, please. Okay, Mr. Chase, you think it should be redone?
Yes, ma'am.
There, I, I just want to make one, if I may ask one substantive question?
That's why we're here.
I see that the workman's comp fund that we had already, in the previous version, had $150,000 taken from it, has now, now that amount is $375,000. So I'm just wondering what the basis of that was to underfund workman's comp even more.
I can answer that.
I'm sorry, okay, Ms. Manis?
The basis of that is, previous years, it was funded less $25,000. And when the transfers to complete the reconciliation for the WPCA of $5 million, the money that was used came from those funds. As Mr. Dumas stated into the record last time, who has FOIA'd all of this information, those funds are heavily funded. I would rather cut, decrease, I want to say, those funds than cut people. So I don't want to cut the mayor's office. I don't want to cut the chief of staff. I don't want to cut the supervisor who supervises herself in economic development. I don't want to cut those people. I want to keep jobs. So I would rather do this than keep jobs. For a year, we have to keep jobs. So I'm making a decision. You, you elected me to make good decisions. I think this is a good decision, rather than laying off policemen and firemen and all that crazy stuff. I think that this is the best decision, and this is where the money came from when we went looking for it. I mentioned that in my comments, so I'm back to work. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I, I, listen, I don't know if you're going to recess or not. It sounds like you may to clean this up, to try to get as accurate as possible. I just have one question. Does this amendment still transfer, if adopted tonight, does this amendment still transfer money from the WPCA to the town of Stratford?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I really don't know at this point how I feel about recessing. This budget's been out for months. We've supposedly been working independently and/or in groups with each other for weeks. There was an initial potential amendment put on the, put on our tables at the 6:30 Monday. I believe I wrote the time on it. There was another one put on our tables at 11:30. I mean, I, I just feel like we keep going and going, and right now, it was about kind of getting rough numbers put together. Now we're down to specifics, and we're down to details, but they're details about labels. We haven't even started pulling out calculators and going through numbers yet. Who, who knows how that whole thing is going to go down? And, you know, I'm very surprised by this because this is a group of people who have called Board of Education numbers into question. They've called State of Connecticut numbers and reports into question. And now, here we are with who knows what we're looking at. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have another amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Manis?
The following numbers in contingency, 01151 62...
What, what page are you on?
We're on page two. I'm on page twenty-four in the, in the budget. 01151 6621, contingency, workman's comp, all. That stays the same. However, 01151 6621, please add the numbers, 01401, contingency, public works. Next line, 01151 6621, 01461 should be added to that. 01151, the line number is 6621, please add 01471. And then the following number, 011...
What, I'm sorry, what was the last one?
01151 6621.
You have two lines with the same number right now?
There's an additional number.
It's 04, 01471.
Then my question is, you have two lines on this document that have been provided that are both 01151 6621. Which one are you adding to?
There are three. So basically what's happening is workman's comp all is 6621 alone, and then the delineation, it goes to a further number. 6621 01401, 6621 01461, 6621 01471. So it distinguishes the accounts from each other. The next line is 01151 6621, and it should be 6623, workman's comp settlement. Those changes, I'm proposing for an amendment. I'd like a second.
Second.
All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no, I did a wrong discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Eight more to go.
I think we just voted.
Wait, vote again, I guess?
Okay. No, you did not, I didn't recognize the vote. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. Is there a motion to call the question?
I move that we call the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
No.
Wait, roll, okay, roll call? Mr. Farrington Posner?
No.
Are they even going to let him finish? No.
Yes.
No.
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 Yes?
Yes.
No.
Yes, motion fails six to four. Okay, we shall continue the discussion on this.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
There's one area that Mr. Khan brought up, and it's actually a follow-up to the question the mayor actually just asked concerning the, um, applied overhead to the town. Now, the town is getting money from the WPCA for applied overhead. The problem is, uh, it's not getting enough money from the WPCA. And after listening to the discussion between Mr. Khan and Mr. Timniak this past Monday, talking about the study that was done by a consultant that was unanimously passed by the WPCA at the urging of the chairman, Ms. Antezzo. There's a section in this study which says, "A cost allocation study may show," as the letter from the chief administrative officer does, "that the cost of the service to the WPCA from the general fund equal or exceed the current overhead charges, making a land use rent charge unnecessary." What he's saying here is that, in effect, we're being short-changed, and that we're short about $900,000. I think this is irresponsible, and again, an indication that, I don't know where you're, where you're, where you're going with this, but you are seriously hurting the town of Stratford and its taxpayers.
Can you read the sentence again?
Okay, that, that's a point of, point of information. I'm sorry, Mr. Chase, could you read the sentence again for Mr. Khan?
"A cost allocation study may show," as the letter from the chief administrative, administrative officer does, "that the cost of the services to the WPCA from the general fund equal or exceed the current overhead charges, making a land use rent charge unnecessary."
I'd like to comment on that.
I'm sorry, he's not done. Are, are you finished, Mr. Chase?
Actually, no. Um, Mr. Timniak, am I correct on this? Is my interpretation of this re, study, I don't want to call it an audit because it is a study, is it correct?
Yes, based upon the report which was in here, I reaffirmed what was given to us as the final report in March 2017. I looked through it, and it was the recommendation of Michael Maker, who was the person hired by the WPCA to do the report. And he made several other recommendations in here, which we have yet to follow through with, but on this, the finance department did follow through. They created a cost allocation study. Like I said on Monday night, there's a disagreement on whether this board thinks it's right, and, um, but the report did recommend that it was, should be increased. And it also recommended that it should be implemented gradually.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. The mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chase still has the floor. Mr. Chase?
I'll yield to the mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Water Police Control Authority requested this, this document, the, the study.
Yes.
Have they followed up on any of the recommendations of the study?
I mean, that's a question for the WPCA authority. I've looked at it. There's, I mean, there's several glaring ones they haven't. I would... I've looked at it, there's, I mean, there's several glaring ones they haven't, I would have...
No, we haven't, because we've...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's between, the mayor has the floor.
Well, I'm just the chairman of the double...
Well, the mayor has the floor.
Can you comment further on some of the things they have not adopted on this? Because I just want to make sure the town's being reimbursed properly.
Well, I haven't, I haven't added up a total of all the recommendations and compared it to what the WPCA board's done, but perhaps the chairwoman could...
Can, can we keep this discussion about this amendment? You can go ahead.
But it devolves, I'll be short, I promise. Was there, well, actually, I'll ask this question later. So the recommendations, as far as you know, have not been, none of them have been taken into consideration regarding this study?
I haven't seen them.
Madam Chairman?
Excuse me, I have the floor, ma'am.
Madam Chairman?
So they, they have not...
I haven't seen them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, wait, then Mr. Chase has the floor. He yielded it to the mayor. Are you done, Mr. Chase?
I'll retain the floor, but I'll yield for the moment to the chairman of the WPCA. Yes, I'm the chairman of the WPCA. We have not implemented the suggestions, because I, I've been conversing with the gentleman, and I told him we have to get through budget first. We can't get in the middle of changing the WPCA while we're trying to do budget, and we still have to do the WPCA budget. I want to comment on the first thing Mr. Chase read, and that has to do with the charges. The charges that were given to me on a sheet, and I think everybody else saw it, it was on the WPCA, was chargeback of $944,000, which is kind of interesting, because I think at, at 15 or 16 people that we have employed there, it was something over $60,000 a man, which is kind of interesting, because some of the people don't even get that much pay. But anyway, be that as it may, I seriously disagreed with the chargebacks. I talked to different people in different departments, and none of them, as far as I had gotten, substantiated the high charges that Mr. Timniak had recorded. So if you gave that same sheet to Mr. Maker, who was he to argue with it? You, you know, he accepted it. He didn't call up the different departments and say, did, did you perform this service? Did you do this service? How much of your time is taken?
So...
Or, or, you know, it, it was, I'd agree with about half of it.
But, so he actually did write in the report, and if I can find the line where he says that Stratford's overhead fee is on line, if not under, compared to other municipalities of this size.
I think it's on the bottom of page 28.
Well, that may be true, but I think we have to take our, we have to deal with our figures as we go. From what I understand, Milford is cheaper than we are, so...
So, I mean, but if it's true...
You know, I'm not gonna compare myself to New York, and Stamford, and Hartford, and all the rest of those big, or Bridgeport next door, which charges $700. I have relatives living there, $700 sewer fees.
But if it's true, wouldn't I be justified in following what the report said?
I'm sorry.
If, as you said, it's true, wouldn't I be justified in following the numbers which I gave?
The figures that you gave me, I discussed this with you briefly, were highly overrated.
I disagree with that, but...
Well, you can disagree with me all you want, but I called different people in different departments, and I did not get a substantiation for what you had claimed and charged.
I went over it with the department heads, and again, holding the report in my hand, I feel just...
Well, why would they tell me something different? I have no idea.
I wasn't privy to those conversations, but I feel just in what I did, based upon what the report recommended.
No, it just seemed to me that you were, previously, we've been giving $900,000 to the town. It was $600,000 rent and $300,000 admin. Admin was supposed to take care of whatever overhead fees you were talking about. But anyway, that being said, it was interesting to me that when you finished the totals of all the departments that supposedly were doing things for the WPCA, it came up to 944,000, so you got your $900,000 back. But however, when I talked to department heads, the ones I talked to, not a single one substantiated, and I haven't talked to all of them, I will admit, substantiated what your claims were, that they, that they did all this stuff for us. The only one I agreed with was engineering. I know how much work he does.
Did you talk to the tax collection office and the tax assessor's office? I don't know who you talked to.
As I said, I didn't talk to everybody.
Okay. All right. So the report actually says, conduct a, under recommendations, it says, "Conduct a formal cost allocation study that clearly lays out and documents support services provided by the town of Stratford general fund to each enterprise fund. If the results of the study show significantly higher overhead costs than currently charged, consider gradually phasing in the charges over seven years." So that's what we did. We were gradually, we're gradually moving it to what's in the report, which is recommended. Now, you can disagree with the report, and you can disagree with it, and this is our opportunity to do it, but to stand out and, and say that I've done something wrong, I didn't, I didn't put this report together. This, this was a WPCA expert who was hired by the WPCA board from Maryland to come up here and vet our operations. It's, it's, it's his report, it's not mine.
But he's quoting you.
He's not quoting me. He's giving recommendations based upon other municipalities.
Who is he quoting? He's not quoting anybody. Yeah, he says, quoting... It's here.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Wait, no, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Chase still has the floor. He had ceded to Ms. Antezo.
Well, while she's reading that, Chris, let me ask you this. The chairman of the WPCA says that she talked to some people regarding the assessment, if you will, how much should be charged back to the WPCA. Did you also talk to the department heads about this?
We had each department in, Jay Wahlberg was part of the process, because the report also says the finance director should be in their process.
Right.
And we went through each one, we sat down with them, and we came up with a number which we thought was equitable. Now, again, this is something which is brand new, because it's, 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 you're asking a department head to evaluate the time they spent in supporting the WPCA. It's not something which we track. So we're asking it to be done to the best of their ability. So when someone's recording land use records, and in the land use records, there's a sewer tie-in, that's a part of their responsibility, which they have to record. In my, in my side, I deal with a lot of WPCA issues. Tina?
Hi, Doc.
So my office gets allocated, per the book, a percentage. Previously, we hadn't been doing that.
Okay.
So now we are.
Okay, so you're...
Well, all right, you finish.
All right, I just found the part of the study that I meant and referred to. It says, "A cost allocation study may show, as the letter from the chief administrative officer," that's you, "you sent him a letter, "that the cost of the services to the WPCA from the general fund equal or exceed current overhead charges." So you gave him the information that he made the judgment on. That's what I'm talking about.
So...
You just mentioned land record, putting the liens. I spoke to the town clerk. She said, "The time they pay, spend is probably less than 1%." And your figure was well over 20, I think it was...
Absolutely not.
Well, that's what she said.
We did not allocate 20% of the town clerk's...
No, I didn't say 20%. I forget how many thousands of dollars you put in there. But it wasn't, wasn't small.
Per the recommendation in the report, you take a percentage of the overall budget, because the office is established to perform these duties. So you take that percentage. I think for the town clerk, it was like 2% or 3% of the overall budget for there.
I can't argue with you, because I don't have the sheet in front of me right now, so. I wasn't expecting to talk about WPCA tonight. We will talk about it at other times.
Have you gone over the report?
I have.
Okay.
I haven't got it with me.
Yeah, I, I don't particularly, I mean, this is, this is our town budget, and, you know, I got frustrated earlier on with the mistakes and the object codes and all that stuff. I shouldn't, you know, this budget I started working on in November, you know, I, I put tremendous amount of time, almost every vendor, which is included in this budget, I reached out to, to make sure we had an accurate number in there. The budget we worked on with the mayor brought it to the line, and to have the budget process fall apart, the way it's falling apart, I find is an embarrassment on, on myself, because this is the town I run. This is my profession. And when we can't get object codes, it may not be a big deal, but it's a big deal to Jay Wahlberg, who's typing in the numbers. And it's a big deal to myself, who has to go through, like Tina's doing right now, going through each book to double-check the object codes are right. So it may seem small, and it may seem, just seem like a number, but to the staff who's behind that number, that's a big deal.
And it's being fixed, it'll take 10 minutes.
I'm sorry, you're interrupting.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Chase.
Thank you. Chris, one last question. How much, I don't have the figure offhand, I'm figuring it out here. How much money does it, how much money is the town losing with this WPCA change? There, it's 278,000. What should it be?
Well, my guess is it should probably be somewhere in the 1.1 range right now, maybe a little bit more, 1.15, around there. There were some, some departments, I know the tax assessor's office, you know, I, we wanted to keep this at the gradual level, and we didn't want to overstate, because I'd be standing here defending an overstatement, and I'd have a department head coming up on what is a formulated guess. So having the gradual thing in, we put the number on paper, and they're tracking it. Most department heads are tracking how they interact with WPCA, so...